Special meeting of the Board of School Committee on Wednesday, September thirteenth. Deb, please call her all.
Mr. Iguodala?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel? Mr. Corey? Ms. Lyerby?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Spain. One nation, united in its soul, under the great empire of our own. Can we have a statement, please, in first order?
We do.
Would you mind leaving it?
Sure. It's from Columbais five sixty, Gray Street, Board of Mass, zero two seven two four, two zero, sorry. Good afternoon, members of the Board of School Committee. I am ready, I am ready for today's special meeting to offer some of my suggestions for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two goals for the school year. I believe it is crucial and important that this school department prioritize maintenance of our schools. We have just constructed a new Derby High School. I am only twenty-one years old. I want to see this new school last at least until I die. I believe this school committee should, one, hire an outside construction firm to do a extensive and forensic review of all of our schools in the district and return with a full report to the committee. Secondly, we should create and convene a HVC maintenance committee with experts in the construction field to have regular meetings to discuss and address building concerns. Another issue that should focus as a goal is we should have an increased focus on teaching civics in our classrooms. I believe students should learn more about the separation of powers and the three branches of government on the state and national levels. We should also teach them the local branches of government. Because sometimes those even on the sixth floor forget about the branches of government, locally and the duties of the city council. If we want to go increase the local election turnout, we should make sure that our local residents know who we are and what we do. We must also make sure that as a school district, that our loyalties are with pupils, not with pantries. Columbais.
Thank you. And before we get into the meeting, pursuant to the open meeting, while any person may make an audio or video recording of the pulse of the meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium, attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed as knowledge permissible. Obviously, we're talking about the school year twenty twenty-one goal setting, which will be facilitated by our superintendent, Maria Ponce. We'll turn over to you a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. So as you know, we're really coming to the school committee with a draft of the goals, and this is a draft that you have before you. And we're looking to keep that, and certainly we can streamline and make adjustments accordingly so that we can have approved goals hopefully out in this school committee or thereafter. I will say that what I try to do is I try to model our goals, just like we do for our educators, whether it's administrators or teachers. The DSC regulations require us to have student learning goals, professional practice goals, and student improvement goals. And that's how I format this document. So for student learning goals, if you notice, some of our goals look similar than before because this is an ongoing process. Last year was an atypical year. Certainly, it was very hard to measure our growth. We're hoping that this year, as we return to some normalcy, we're going to get targets from DESI, and we're going to be able to have quantifiable goals. So our achievement goals, student growth goal, high school completion, English language proficiency goals, and chronic absenteeism percentages, et cetera, those, we are waiting for DESI guidance for the targets to be released so that we can put numbers to those goals, what we will increase in accordance to our data. And for professional practice goals, just like we do with our educators, that's about my learning and my growth, right? So I have, being a new superintendent, one of the things that I feel that I need to work on is to model best practices for our staff in that nurturing a district culture of achievements throughout our entire district where we have reflected practice and we've stated to guide our work. So I am a participant in the lunch leadership. As you know, that you invested in lunch leadership. I will also be an active participant in that in the Leadership Academy and coaching. I am a participant in the new superintendent's induction program. Went to a training this summer, and I have monthly sessions with them, as well as a coach that's assigned to me. And I would be an active participant in the planning and facilitation of monthly principals' meetings and create a cycle for school visits, as well as a cycle for consistently and regularly providing principals with feedback. As you can see, each of the goals follows the documentation that we should see throughout the year, learning materials and samples from the lunch leadership, as well as notes and agendas, attendance at all these PD sessions, school visits, and then we'll be able to measure it by having documented application of these one follow-through, as well as monthly feedback to the principals. Every principal should receive feedback once a month. And we will have an established cycle for school visits from our senior staff team and evaluation of school and district leaders in accordance to DESI regulations. And then the other goal is collaborating with district and school-based leaders to develop and implement effective plans, procedures, routines, operational systems to address safety concerns, social emotional support for our students. And then again, we have the activities. We have executive meetings that happen weekly, monitoring of our district improvement plan, which we met as a district team to revise and adjust, and then the monitoring of our schools' school improvement plans, which are aligned with our district improvement plan, and establishing a system for regular communication with staff and families. And then again, agendas, notes, this is how we will document that that's happening, feedback cycles for departments, and communication samples of what we are working on. And we're going to measure our growth. You should be able to see at minimum one mass communication to families each month, and at minimum three languages and three different formats via email, a phone call, memo, quarterly updates on progress towards meeting the district improvement plan goals, and a hundred percent of our schools will receive training on safety protocols. Does anyone have a question?
I have one.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Ponce. The safety protocols, is it still the Alice training? Is the end of this done by Jill Carrera? Is that?
Yeah, Jill, she's actually scheduling those throughout the district with school leaders. It's not Alice, it's similar to Alice, but it's a modified version.
Okay. Now, is that the only training Jill's doing, or the other components to different trainings?
Well, I mean, they have locked down trainings, they have, you know, fire drill trainings. Everybody needs to make sure, we have to make sure one last thing, that everybody has practice goals trainings, that staff and students, we are all aware that, you know, emergencies can arise at any time.
In all schools before, is there a deadline before all the schools to get their first training?
It has a cycle, and when we, so we'll take feedback to make sure that we have a date for completion of all the trainings.
Thank you. I agree.
Anything further? All right. Question?
What were you referring to? I just didn't, I missed the part about where I'm here was about the special meeting.
Oh, the last part, second page, third step, right before district improvement goals.
Training on safety protocols.
Just the back of page one.
Okay, you want?
Sorry, the back of page one. And did you say, Ms. Ponce, that we're not doing Alice?
It's not, Alice training has changed, right? So he is doing lockdown training, and he's doing, he's been to training, and he's training all schools in different ways to be safe in schools, but it's not Alice. That's not the training that he's.
So it's just a modified Alice?
Yes.
They did at one point switch to Alice.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So now this is a new change from?
Well, it's different because even Alice before, it used to lock down, so that now they shifted that here. Sometimes you would leave the assigned spot, whatever's the safest, so it's not necessarily follow that Alice.
Right, we're just doing a different lockdown than they did, it's just verticals to Alice.
Exactly.
My only comment on this is I like this part where you're trying to model this with what the teachers and other staff would do. I do think that this, I mean, it's only the first draft of it, it's very lengthy.
It is.
There's a lot here, so at the end of the year, when we try to determine whether we met or not, this is going to be very confusing in some ways, so if I could possibly try to combine a little bit so that we, there's some things that are in here that I think you're going to do no matter what, whether they're just natural occurrences around the school district, maybe take those out and only focus on the ones that are actually something that.
The big rock in ours.
Yeah, because as I was looking through this, I said, oh yeah, I know that, we'll be doing that, I know you'll be doing that, I know you'll be doing that, but almost as a given.
Yep.
And pull out maybe the only ones so that at the end of the evaluation, when we decide where we mark it, yes or no, it's a little clearer.
Okay.
And I can probably off-line about that as well, but the first part, student learning goals, is just because of numbers?
Because we don't have, the state hasn't established targets. If you recall, NPAS was administered, but it was administered as in a modified version, only one session, and it was administered for the purpose of diagnostic. Our job is to take that diagnostic data and decide how we're going to use it to address students' learning gaps.
But what is the goal?
We don't have, we don't have it yet because we haven't been given the targets. That will be released hopefully within a month, when the state will quantify it and give you a number.
And in lieu of, if they don't do a target, if they say we're going to just do the best we can, you know?
Oh, they'll give us a target.
If you're going to have some kind of number, though, you know that.
They'll give us a target.
Yeah, I just like that we have numbers, same theory. Yes or no, did we make progress? It's a very clear thing, yes or no.
Yes, I agree.
That's my opinion. Thanks for the presentation.
Mr. Al.
Thank you, Ms. Ponce. Superintendent, do you, for the one hundred percent schools will see training on safety protocols, we've done it throughout the district many times, throughout the US, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak that we've had, we met that goal one hundred percent in every single building because I was in charge of my own building, right? But I'm assuming that we did, I mean, and that's something that has to be done here.
Yeah, right. Is there any, is there going to be any kind of, and I know we've got to do, the whole district has to shoot for a hundred percent, is there going to be any kind of emphasis on the new school at Derby?
Oh.
I mean, it's going to obviously take a lot and a lot of, so what gets, what happens in a new school like Derby? Is there anything different from like the CUSP, or because it's a much bigger school and there's more?
Right, it's a much bigger school, there are many more entrances and exits, many more staff, so that will, they're going to need a comprehensive training in regards to safety. I know that they did some, they upfronted some training, but I think that Jill Carrera and the security team, as well as the SRS, will work with the other staff to make sure.
And it's pretty much kind of already over for the school?
Well, they're already starting to schedule those, so I will make sure that I communicate that information on Friday to see who's going to start it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ponce.
Thank you, Kevin.
This fellow on the number three, special ed programming, this on the, the second page of that refers a lot of times to numbers, ten percent of focus on inclusion, three percent increase in inclusion, three percent, and a number of NPAS all. Can we get the data that goes along with that as well, that results in setting those goals? Yeah, so like I'm here, when you say three percent increase in inclusion programming, what does that mean?
From blank to blank.
Are we going to move like one hit, you know?
Absolutely.
And there's another one around the, basically we go around ten percent somewhere, the same theory, just if we can get the background data, that would help us as well.
Yep, I mean, that's pretty, usually pretty standard, so yes, usually say moving three percent from this to this, so if we tweak this and adjust, we'll include that.
Thank you.
We need to get to that section, you have a question, Mr. Iguodala. You read the first part.
Oh, it's the whole thing.
Well, I, I think, that's a, you're telling.
Where's he getting that from?
Yep, so I went through, I went through the student learning goal.
I thought you went through the whole thing.
No, that's okay. I mean, I, we certainly, and we have to read each one word for word, right? So obviously, the district improvement goals, teaching and learning, the state, DESI released an acceleration roadmap that we aligned automatically our district improvement plan to the acceleration roadmap, and it's broken down into phases. So we're going to implement our district's improvement plan that's already aligned. Our, really the focus of the acceleration roadmap is to create, in recognition that kids have been away for eighteen months, we want to create a sense of belonging in school, welcome kids back, continuous monitoring of students. We know that we've had students' learning gaps that were created as a result of them being away, so we need to be monitored and monitor progress, accelerating students that need to be accelerated, and creating scaffolds and hand supports for students who need the additional support. While teaching grade level curriculum, right? We want to make sure we have opportunities to support students with prerequisite skills, right? That's where schools have win blocks or intervention blocks, and we also, we don't want to create a gap as we close a gap. So we don't want to say, oh, these kids are behind, so we're going to be teaching third grade curriculum instead of fourth grade to close that gap because we're creating another gap on the other end. So what we need to do is be teaching fourth grade standards and creating opportunities for intervention to address those skills that are lacking for students. So that's going to be our focus with, we want to make sure that kids have access to grade level curriculum, have access to supports as we continue to address their lacking skills and move them forward and accelerate them. Okay? So do you want to go through which one of those singles, focus on the goals itself?
Right, focus on the goals.
Okay. So the other, the other, the second goal is on student support services. Obviously, we want to create that sense of belonging, create a safe environment as students return to school, and engage our students and families, right? So we're going to make sure that we're building capacity of our staff, making sure that our students, our SACS, our councils are equipped with the knowledge and the training as they deal with trauma-sensitive issues that are coming up as a result of those. Our kids had a lot of trauma, and this is just compounded some of that. We're going to make sure that we're collaborating and coordinating community partnerships to address student need and student, we're going to be collecting, analyzing, looking at data to create opportunities to increase engagement. One of the things that we need to do a better job is to really involve our families and figure out how we, one of the things we heard as a result of the shutdown was kids will home, and we expect the parents automatically to become teachers. And we need to create opportunities to help our parents to help their children, right? So have some programming and opportunities to support families and supporting students. And if we do all that, we should be able to increase our student attendance because we're going to create these environments where kids are going to be connected to school, and they're going to come to school, right? Decrease our suspensions because our kids don't want to be in school. We have to teach our kids those social skills and really make sure that they are ready to learn, right? The next goal is special ed programming, just to add here already.
Chairman.
Oh, it's our, yes.
Do you have a targeted goal in mind for, when you say the increase in daily attendance over SY twenty measures? Is there a frame for that framework there, of the percentages? I mean, last year's attendance, we heard the presentation, it was terrible. And so when you say increase it over SY, SY twenty measures, are you talking five percentage points, ten percentage points, or you're just looking to increase it over last year?
Well, it's not necessarily, last year cannot be a barometer because our attendance was horrendous. I think that we need to look at what our typical attendance was, we have not, obviously, we're going to be receiving our data for attendance, it's, we have to look at what a typical year looked like, and even then, we needed help, right, to increase our attendance. I do think that we went back and forth whether we really need to call out and have a separate goal. We're requiring all schools to have a separate goal, calling out attendance, increasing daily attendance, and decreasing chronic absenteeism. So if that's the feedback, we will create one that just simply calls out attendance.
Of all the things that I've read so far, and we're still working our way through this, you know, one of the more important things, I think, and has to be set in your goal, is your expectation that this district has improved attendance.
Yep.
That's something that's been sort of haunting this district for years, long before you, long before fries and that. So at some point, there's got to be this all hands on deck, call to action approach that it's not going to happen anymore, and I think it's got to start with you and your goals, and then it's got to filter down to what your expectations are in goals, for your principals, right down to the school adjustment councils, the tenants' offices, et cetera. But it's got to start here, I think, because if it's not well defined in your goals, I think it becomes more difficult to make it an emphasis or emphasis for your building leaders and their staff as well. So I would support, and again, just have a conversation because it's a draft, but I would encourage it to be a standalone goal of yours to, you know, sort of accentuate the importance of it in that the committee's going to hold you as our superintendent to that standard of attendance does matter, and we're going to make it an all hands on deck approach to improve it. And so I raise that because, you know, I think just simply increasing daily attendance over SY twenty measures, you know, I don't know that that's got a lot of emphasis on it or a lot of high expectations in terms of what we're looking to do. My hope is that we do, given what I saw in the presentation heard last year. I think some of that could happen on its own without you trying. I think we need to put more emphasis on it, that's all.
Yeah, I think it will look similar to our achievement data, right? So just like our individual schools set goals for increasing the LA, the math and science data, as well as attendance, then we also take that and look at where we stand as a district and create a standalone goal that stands out and speaks loudly that kids need to be in school and not for them to work. We will do that.
Question?
Oh, it's very good. So I agree with Ms. Costa on tweaking this a little bit, but I think what we should have, we've never had, it always looks like, we say that we hold the superintendent accountable, superintendent holds the principals accountable for their buildings, but we never see anything that looks like that. So in my mind, if all of the school improvements have a goal that says my school will improve by X to Y, or whatever it is, this goal should be articulating what those are, and then you're going to hold those schools accountable to each of those. So if we're measuring the success, if you have twelve schools and none of them met their numbers, then you didn't meet your number. You know, rather than have them, it becomes more clear that way than just lump them all together and saying, we'll improve our overall attendance. But case in point, last year we had COVID, we had all this remote learning. Consistently, I would tell the superintendent, if we have one school doing very well, and whatever it is, why doesn't every school deal with the same thing? And the answer we always got was, oh, we're not talking about that, or excuses. Really, if one person, if the schools can do the right thing, then the other school should be doing the same. So I would recommend that you include all of that in here so that it's not chumbled up, it's going to be very clear.
And that would include, I mean, that's good feedback, right? So we have the goal and we have the key actions. Part of that is monitoring the attendance goals for the schools, that would be the key action, and the benchmark would be that five out of the twelve schools are the, you know, and having like quarterly check-ins or however we determine that, and creating short-term goals if schools are not meeting their goal, or they're not close, nobody's going to meet their goal first term, right? But if we can see the trajectory, they're going where they are, so that we can start making adjustments and create short-term goals. So we'll articulate all that and frame it the same way that these goals are, but creating attendance goals, specific actions as well as benchmarks.
Yeah, I think that would be, would be a good thing, and at the end of the day, I know we have a dependence policy on, but if we focus on measuring it like this, there will be no longer any excuses of why schools don't implement what we say. So if the attendance thing that we're going to approve later articulates, we're going to do this when the kid's out, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to pick them up, there's no excuse why they can't do that. They should be implementing it with fidelity, which if you put it in your goal, I think is going to strengthen that, the teeth behind it. Thank you, I agree.
Good. All right, so the next one is the special ed programming, and I think Ms. Iguodala had jumped to this one just a few minutes ago. So again, we're going to continue to strengthen the overall design and implementation of our special needs programming, including the structures, and taking the recommendations from the board as well as the DESI audit, and adding them to the plan, to the goal. So we have some partnerships that we're working with, as well as, you know, some work that we're doing with the department, and also we are, I know that, Ms. Loesch, we have lots of PD over the summer to support free intervention, enhanced intervention, so that our team could support our students and our teachers better. So I think we've already written down that that data leads to the three percent increase needs to be judged against the previous data from blank to blank, we're going to do that and then continue to look at that to the targets, meet the targets.
Any questions, Ms. Iguodala?
Yes, I think there's maybe a topic at one of the subcommittees when we get around to having those, but, which hopefully sooner than later, but the committee, the office says special level identified reading and legal program for autism inspection and community-based programs. I'd like to see some sort of goal around a review of all of those programs and how we're going to implement changes. I know that it sprinkles within all of these goals, but if we can have one focused specifically on that population, it'll give us a framework for where it needs to go. It doesn't have to be necessarily part of those goals, but I think a full review of all those programs could be part of the goal. That by the end of the year, we're going to actually get to know exactly what we have, whether we have to bring in experts to look at things and recommend stuff, but then at the end of the year, we're going to have a new type of program or service of those children. Thank you. Are you?
We are going to tell them to, our next goal is student success pathways. We've done some great work with expanded and improving some of the structures that we have in place for educational planning through college and career. So we're going to, obviously, we transition evolve into our, from our PA, our RLA, our PA to Derby High School. We're going to continue that work for launching a partnership with Diamond for an active program. You're going to hear about that today at the regular school committee. We're going to expand our goals to expand enrollment in the Derby's four early college pathways, and we're expanding our existing dual language. We opened it up today, this week, with kindergarten at the Veris. Next year, we'll roll that out, that's going to be a six, five-year, every year we'll roll out a grade level. And we're going to also expand some access to early childhood areas, we've expanded those, convert some of the part-time pre-Ks into state time, and we're going to continue to identify spacing and hopefully throw out our pre-K because we know that's a key element in student achievements. All right? And then?
Just a quick point on that, on part four, at the end, increase in PK enrollment, pre-K.
Yes.
And I know, and this is a draft, but I know that before the pandemic hit, that's really hard, we had some pretty lofty goals for pre-K. Obviously, the building space was a big issue, but the SOA money was there for it. Are we? Are we, what are you anticipating for, like an increase possibly for pre K for, maybe not this school year, but?
I think that we, what we need to do first is identify some space. We are, we have expanded some of our pre K classes, I think, where capacity. And we need to identify some alternative spaces so that we can grow pre K.
Yeah, I think that's, okay, that's good to hear. I just think that's a, that's key to any school district, especially. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then we have facilities and capital improvements and transportation. We're going to continue to be proactive, right? We need to make sure, I mean, we heard a little while ago, we have ready buildings. We have lots of new buildings. We need to make sure that we take a proactive approach and make sure that we focus on preventative measures and maintenance so that we can have buildings for a long time, right? And make sure that our buildings are standing for test of time. Oh, we're going to continue to develop comprehensive plan to replace the air handling units and H VAC components in our buildings. And we're going to start with the complete of an assaged building, the age, the condition of the units and create a plan for supporting that. And in addition, for transportation, we're going to, we have to improve our tiering for student transportation and successfully manage the completion of the Durfee High School building. There's still lots of projects that are in the works. We're working on launching phase two of Watson. We have parking lot improvements at Talbot that are underway and really going to be picking up. The access road for Henry Ward, we're starting that work. We have parking lot improvement at Sylvia. We have design and replacement of the roof at Pace, which is a big project. Where it also, with the old Durfee closing down, we are moving the special needs offices to the Pace Center. So they've started, they've demoed areas where fine arts used to be. And they're starting to put up walls and dividing. So we're going to be creating a new special needs center over there. And we have phase three of the demolition of the old Durfee High School. I think Durfee, there's, the target is that we're going to start demoing next week. We're starting from the inside. There's going to be lots of work happening there, which is happening up to the Ray Street area and that access road. And obviously, we're going to have, once that's done, we'll do some improvements of the fields. We have soccer stadium that's being built where that old high school is, the tennis courts, et cetera. So that work, the baseball field reconstruction, so all that work is going to be dependent on the completion of the demolition of the old Durfee. Lots of work happening, so.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, when you're done.
Go right ahead. No, I was going to say, like, hopefully, if we do all these things that we're saying we're going to do and have, you know, some efficient buildings, efficient services for our students, transportation services, and really have that dirty complex really become a hub of the community.
One question I have to go across the city. I mentioned the parking lot improvement, but we would be studying or actually creating a second means of egress that you want to the property. I don't see that listed. I'm not sure if that's tied into the parking lot improvement, but I definitely want to keep that rolling because that's a project we've already, you know, invested in and you could see that something happened there.
Yep, I actually talked to Mr. Pacico about that because you had talked to me about.
There's a few, there's a few I haven't talked about.
Some work that needs to be done. So we can certainly add Sylvia in here, that, that work.
And then to touch base on something that you even heard said, are we looking into space for pre K? There was a star of Silver's in operations, though. Are we looking at using the old building, talking about Wiley School?
Yep.
Possibly using that or, you know, fixing up some of the other buildings or maybe even, I don't know, maybe getting some space so we can get a space program.
I think we need short-term and long-term plans, right? So if we're going to do the Wiley School, that's going to be some years away, right, to do all that repair work and get it up to code. And we need to have some short-term goals, looking at alternative spaces that perhaps we can rent as well as a long-term plan for expanding and creating maybe an early warning center.
So I'm not sure of any of that. You know, is there something we want to add to this? I'm not sure about the sex of draft.
No, we, we, okay, now that's, that's what this is for, right? So absolutely, we can add that to it.
What are your thinking?
And then finally, we have, so since, not finally, I think that we have one more, but technology, right? So that's, we have a department now. Before COVID, we had a few people that worked in the tech department. But it, technology has exploded, right? And the need for us to have good systems in place. And really, I think that if, if anything, what COVID did was it exposed our need to have a well-functioning department where they have the support that they need to make sure that our schools have the support that they need, right? So Scott has a lot of goals. He wants to make sure that our, you know, all of our schools are equipped with the, you know, newest technology, that teachers have the resources that they need and that we have the training that we're supposed to be providing for our students and for our staff. So one of the things is that there's infrastructure upgrades that he's put on here. We want to make sure that we have connectivity. We have some schools that we're upgrading to. So when you look at, for instance, the Green School, that was the newest school for a long time, many years back, right? But what we need to do is have that proactive plan so that we are updating on a regular basis. So we're not waiting for things to work down before we, we tap that, right? So Scott's infrastructure program is to take the schools and tier them and make sure that everybody's online and ready to, to, to work. Make sure that they're able to access the internet and use it in their everyday work, so.
Is that, Mr. Aggarh?
Yes.
I just have one, just comment on one prior, it says transportation costs will remain stable. I personally think that that's what we all would like. But I think if you put that in as part of your goal, you're setting yourself up because that's out of your control sometimes. You could do the best that possible, it might go up. So I'm not sure that that should be something to judge you on, first time. The other one is implement the bottom of the page, a Chromebook initiative for all students to be true one-to-one. I thought that we are one-to-one and we have plenty of Chromebooks and plenty of money.
I, I, and I think that we are.
I'm afraid so, I'm missing something.
No, I think that we have plenty of Chromebooks. I think that the middle schools, the Verizon grant helped us with that initiative because all the middle school kids received a Verizon Chromebook. I think that we've had, our enrollment has gone up somewhat. So we are, we are creating a restocking supply so that we can make sure that all schools have what they need in addition to have supplies. So if the Chromebook breaks down, students uses it alone until we repair it. And then do that, so we want to have a solid system in place where we have a true one-to-one. We did get lots of Chromebooks back from kids using them all this summer. But some of those are in repair, which is maybe keeping some of the schools just shy of the one-to-one because they are out being repaired. So we want to make sure that we have enough Chromebooks for every single person, the adults as well as kids.
I would give you an example. My feeling is with the amount of resources that we have plus all the other stuff, we should be one-to-one and then some at this point. We should have plenty of reserves. So I don't know if the language in here needs to change to say policies and protocols about it or something. But if you ask me, and if anybody in the community asks us, yeah, we're one-to-one. We have 10,000 kids, we have 10,000 Chromebooks. So if that's not the case, then I think we need to have that compensation because we should.
Yeah, and I think that's some of that is supply domain, right? So we ordered plenty of actual Chromebooks. We are, I know that one of the things that we asked Scott and his team to do is to inventory every single school to see how many each one has so that we can supplement the difference. So I can share that information with you, exactly how many we have at each school as well as what the enrollment is at the local.
Yeah, I don't doubt that, you know, we are doing the best we can and grow it. Because my point is if we have, if we have 10,000 students, we should have 4,000 Chromebooks.
I agree.
If we don't have that, then we need an order to come in from, you know, whatever it is, so.
We have a monitor going.
Kevin, just so, in the sense of true one-to-one, right now, when we started this Chromebook initiative years ago, those devices are now end of life. So we have 2,000 or so Chromebooks that are being used every day now. Typically, they're in Chromebook park and used in the classrooms. Now they're going back and forth in school home. So we actually have right now just under 3,000 Chromebooks that are in some sort of repair. So the plan is to, when we say true one-to-one is to have spares. So that way, if a Chromebook comes in for the fifth time, it's not going back into the hand of the student. It goes into a pile of parts. And then we're using the new Chromebooks, and there's actually something tonight. So we can ingest new, we have to have a cycle of life program here now because they're being used so much. So we're always going to be at that 10,000 number. We're a little over it right now. But if you step back and look at the amount of Chromebooks we have, we really have 3,000 that are in need of some type of repair. So we're under that number. So as we're repairing, we're getting back out into the buildings. Probably one thing that COVID has shown us is we didn't have like a life cycle plan on any of these Chromebooks now. So now we're hoping to have, my envision is to have a closet somewhere where we have five, 600 Chromebooks. So that way, every year, we're getting rid of the older devices and getting the newer technology in there. And then we're not fixing and trying to Frankenstein Chromebooks as we are.
So you're saying we have 10,000 students, we have 3,000 in repair, that means you only have 7,000 working Chromebook?
So we have, as the repairs come out, they literally go back out. So the, the repair time on it is actually right now, they're doing about 300 or 400 a day. But right now, the buildings have enough Chromebooks to sustain their levels right now, right? But what we're doing is we're trying to get those Chromebooks to not even get back into the hands of the kids, the ones that are just non-repairable. So we actually have a stash of brand-new Chromebooks. So now when my staff says, we've got, this one's coming 11 times and it can't go back out, we send out a new Chromebook. But what I'd like to be able to do now is at the end of every summer, look at the Chromebooks and say, for example, like Laterno School, we look at the model numbers that they have. There are a lot of what we call the G3 model. We need to phase those out and constantly have this program where we're replenishing these new Chromebooks so that we're not dealing with the systemic issues we're having right now.
No, I hear what you're saying, the languages would need to change. We currently have a one-to-one, you want to make it more robust and have a backup plan and a lot. This is that we haven't had, so that was the confusion. But if we need more money, then money is what we have right now, so. Thank you very much.
Anything further?
And finally, we're at, oh, I'm sorry. Finally, we have our community capital goal, our goal, this is a continuation goal. Obviously, with COVID last year, some of these goals were not realized because people are mostly in the building. So with our goals to continue to develop and strengthen our teacher leadership, that diversification, pipeline, detention, et cetera. So we need to make sure we have a healthy professional development plan for our parents, for our teachers, for our leaders. We're going to be expanding our JET program, continuing with our partnerships with some of our neighboring colleges so that we can get people in and create this pipeline to, for hiring. So our goal is to, I will say that those, if you look at the success for implementation, when we do the final goals, we will have those numbers because everything's been so fluid. We don't have, we're, we're tracking those numbers. And we will have the, the numbers of where we were. In regards to where we need to be, we'll have those in there.
Can I just ask, and I know that I mentioned it last year when talking about here with goal setting with us, that we, you have a goal, the committee agrees, obviously, but that we attempt to make our staff at all levels more diverse. You know, whether it's active recruiting, whether it's a program that we initiate here in our district. I just think that, I'm a strong believer that our classrooms and our professionals reflect the population that's sitting before them. And so I know our district has historically had relatively low numbers. But I think making it a goal, and I think Superintendent, I don't know if you said increase it by 1% or whatever it was, which I thought was real low, given the number of staff. That could mean bringing one or two people on, and we have always met. But, you know, and I don't know what percentage it needs to be, but I, I think that is the remaining focus for us. Again, you know, obviously, we'll work with our partners with the JET program. But, you know, whether Fall River has to create its own or whether we do some sort of recruitment fair or something, I really think that that needs to continue to be a focus for a district like Fall River. If we truly want to call ourselves inclusive and diverse, I think we really need to make a focus on making sure that the staff and the adults that stand before children are representation of the district itself. And so I'd like, in some form or fashion, that we work into, into the goals.
Okay, I could not agree more. We will, we will make sure that we call that out specifically of how we're going to recruit. I think that once we have the data, you will see that this year, the numbers are much better. Some schools did a really good job, but I do think that there's still lots of work that needs to be done in that area. We need to be actively doing that work.
That kind of stuff needs to be celebrated, but I don't, we rest on it.
Oh.
I don't think we say we did a great job, okay, so we're fine now. I think we say we did a great job, how do we do that and how do we continue to improve it?
Yes. We'll call it out in the end after the conference.
Is there a question?
Chair, just one more. To go back, I'll say, my acceleration, a pretty big program a few years ago. And we've looked at all this, and I just want to make sure that, I know you mentioned the moment going to be a big transportation that was unprepared for letting it accelerate. You said students would be accelerated, we're being accelerated. And that's great to know that, but is there a way that we can measure that? How many students will be receiving this advance for, you know, in the classroom, in the program? I can't think of the name that you mentioned it to me.
Honors for the middle school. We're creating an honors, Mort already has an honors program and it's how it started. CUS does not yet because they still were phasing out the, this is the last sixth grade class gate and they'll phase out when they're in eighth grade. And next year, Mort, CUS will have a gate class. What, what the, what we need to do, you know, gate was good, but it was, in a way, it boxed kids in, the cohort, and they only, they, they were co-horted for the entire thing. So some students might be strong math students and might be in the honors math class, but they might not be as strong in E L A and it might be in a regular E L A class. What we want to do is we want to make sure we broaden that access to all students and give them opportunities to be in accelerated classes, starting with the middle school because they're going to funnel into the high school, to those honors classes and A P classes, pre A P, et cetera. I think that we've trained our elementary teachers in the U D L. And one of the things that we need to do is make sure that our teachers are differentiating in the classroom, supporting students who are in need of additional support and also creating opportunities for the kids who are ready to fly, also are ready to fly and we're giving them opportunities to be successful and to, to work at their pace.
Right, so my concern is just with the elementary level, those students are recognized and they're offered that.
Yes.
And the U D L, it's all about.
Yes.
So is there a way, because you, how do we know those students, when they get to sixth grade, are going to go to that path for them? Is the patent council going to recommend it? Is someone going to be there to say, this student needs to be in advanced class?
Yes, usually, students who are placed in honors, they will be recommended by a school-based team. And it will be a combination of just, not just one test, a combination of the student work, their assessments, et cetera. And then they will be recommended, teacher recommendation, and they'll be recommended for the honors program.
Right, and, and I'm probably saying the same thing over and over on Saturday. So on the third grade level, those teachers will begin to talk maybe to the fourth grade.
Yes.
And then the fourth grade will talk to the fifth grade, all the way up the chain. Because I just, to capture those students in the third grade.
Right.
With the gate program. And both of my oldest kids were in the program, I think it's a great program. If you look at some of the kids who graduated last year, they were with my daughter, she graduated last year. A lot of that going on, psychology, engineering, a lot of STEM students. So you can see they're always top 10, I mean, I don't have them gate students. So I just want to, I don't want to now target the students in the elementary level. I don't want to wait till middle school, right? I want to make sure they're getting some extra, you know, regular elementary.
Intended to support our students, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? I, I just have too good, Mr. Aggarh, I think she has to pare this was down for about 200 items there.
Let's, well, I mean, that's.
A lot of it is automatically, but at the same time, you want to make sure when it's assessed that it looks, it looks being dangerous.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's what we'll do, we'll go back to the table, pull out the mic, the mic issue, you know, the details. We're doing automatically, you pick out the big ticket items and keep them together.
Okay, go ahead.